The February 24th, 2015 meeting of the Marion County School Board is called to order. For the courtesy of those listening to the meeting, I'm requesting everyone in the audience to please turn off their electronic devices or put them on vibrate. I would like to recognize members of the Boy Scout Troop 196 Fort King Presbyterian Church, who are here with parent Kelly Owen McCall to observe our meeting as a requirement of their citizenship in the community merit badge. Michael and Kylie, will you stand, please? Thank you, welcome to our meeting. Thank you. Later in the meeting, up to thirty minutes will be provided for individuals to address the board on matters concerning the operation of the Marion County school system of the school board only. Presentation to the board are limited to five minutes and are televised. If you wish to address the board regarding a regular agenda item on matters which the board customary takes action, you must first complete a peach form located on the front table. If you wish to address the board regarding a public hearing or a student discipline matter, please complete a lime green form. These forms must be fully completed and received by the board secretary no later than 5:40 PM. The procedures applicable for each are on a separate sheet. Madam Secretary, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Bobby James, District 3.
Here.
Mrs. Kelly King, District 5.
Here.
Mrs. Nancy Stacy, District 1.
Here.
Mrs. Carol Ely, District 2.
Present.
Ms. Angie Boynton, District 4.
Here.
Mr. Stephen Lake, Board Attorney.
Here.
Mr. George Tomlin, Superintendent.
Here.
Ms. Judy Zanetti, Public Education Foundation Officer, please introduce Marion County's Teacher of the Year, who will be providing the inspiration and lead us in the pledge this evening.
Good evening Superintendent Tomlin and board members, thank you for once again allowing me to be here, and thank you all for attending the 25th anniversary of the Golden Apple Teacher Gala, and thank you Mrs. Ely for serving on our rookie selection committee. I appreciate you sharing your time and talents with us. As you know, the Golden Apple Gala is one of the premier programs of the Public Education Foundation, and certainly our most favorite time of the year. And each year we get to choose a Rookie Teacher of the Year, who will be visiting you shortly, and five Golden Apple Teachers. And those teachers represent all of the outstanding educators we have here in Marion County. And one stands at the top, and her name is Bethany Crawford, the 2014-2015 Marion County Teacher of the Year. And Bethany represents all of the 2,800 teachers that work here in Marion County. Mrs. Crawford is a graduate of North Marion High School. She holds two degrees from the University of Florida, a bachelor's in history, and a master's in secondary social studies education. She joined the district in 1997 as a social studies teacher at North Marion High School, her alma mater, and she left for a little while, but she returned to Marion County in 2009 as a social studies teacher at Forest High School. Today she teaches advanced placement in U.S. history, advanced placement comparative politics, economics, and honors economics. And I am proud to introduce you to Bethany Crawford, Marion County's Teacher of the
Thank you very much for the opportunity to speak to you this evening. These past few days have been a whirlwind of activity, as you can imagine, and I have felt tremendous support and appreciation. I'm eternally grateful to the Public Education Foundation for their involvement in the Golden Apple Academy, and for their efforts to showcase the outstanding educators we have in Marion County public schools. As a proud graduate of this district, I'm honored to have the opportunity to repay the hard work and effort of all of my former teachers at North Marion High, and I am glad to represent the educators throughout Marion County as the 2015 Teacher of the Year. Throughout this process, I've met amazing professionals, who are dedicated to their students, and work to help every day the children develop into caring, compassionate citizens, who are ready to face the challenges of the 21st century. As a teacher, I am proud of their professionalism, and as a parent of a child currently enrolled in Marion County public schools, I'm grateful for their dedication and perseverance. But as I enjoy this blessing, I will continue to remember the words of Theodore Roosevelt, "As much has been given us, much will be expected of us." Over the next year, I hope to act as a positive force in the field of education, and use this opportunity to highlight all that is working in classrooms across Marion County. I look forward to lending my time and service to helping support public education in our county, and would welcome the chance to work with all stakeholders in education to fulfill that mission. Our community, our schools, our teachers, and most importantly, our kids deserve nothing less. Thank you. Could you all please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you all.
Thank you. Before you leave, Bethany, I just want to congratulate you so much, and thank you for all you do for our students here in Marion County.
Thank you so much.
I really enjoyed your presentation on Friday night. We were all in tears. I'm glad that this didn't happen again tonight, but I ask you, how's the new 2015 Mazda?
It's wonderful. It's probably the nicest car I've ever owned, so...
We want to thank the dealership so much for their donation.
Yes, I know. I sent a lovely email to them, just because it was beyond belief that that was able to happen, so my kids were absolutely thrilled, so...
It was great. Will enjoy it, and congratulations.
Ms. Stacy has...
And I also enjoyed the Golden Apple Gala. It was just amazing. In fact, there were people that were there that said it was the best.
Oh, good.
The best. Of all the productions, it was the best. And it was just nice, it was just a nice right length of time, and it was just so many things leading up to the big surprise. And I'm also extra proud because all three of my children graduated from Forest High School. You guys at Forest High School made two engineers and a math major.
Wonderful.
And I am so thankful for you, because I can't do math very well, so they learned it from you. Thank you.
Thank you all very much.
I just want to personally thank you also, and I have no doubt that you're going to fulfill your mission, and your speech was just so touching and moving, and as a teacher or fellow teacher also, I appreciate you.
Thank you so much.
Ms. Crawford, I was hoping you would say, "It's great to be a high school teacher."
It is, it's like, great to be a high school teacher.
The reason I was saying that, sometimes we overlook what the high school teachers really do, in reference to working with young adults, and the young lady that introduced you is a fine product of what you are about. And I just wanted to let you know, half of all of students that move through our system and get to the point where you're teaching and working with them on that final step, that was a job well done, and I know all of your kids are very proud of the fact that you're being recognized today.
Yes, they are.
Thank you.
Thank you so much, all of you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mrs. Superintendent.
Board members, I recommend approval of the agenda for the February 24th, 2015 School Board meeting with the materials in the board packet. Those materials distributed to board members at the meeting, the audio recording and DVD included, as part of the official record of the meeting.
May I have a motion on the superintendent's recommendation?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Mr. James, and seconded by Mrs. Ely. Any discussion? Call a question? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. And the motion passes 5-0. May I have a motion to approve the minutes for the January 22nd, 2015 Administrative Briefing and Work Session, the January 27th, 2015, to the School Board meeting? I have a motion.
So moved. Second.
Motion has been moved by Ms. Ely, and seconded by Mrs. King. Is there any discussion or corrections for the minutes? Call a question? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. And the motion passes 5-0. May I have a motion to adopt the proclamation recognizing the month of March as Music in Our Schools Month?
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. James, and seconded by Ms. Ely. Is there any discussion? Call a question? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And the motion passes 5-0. Ms. Belinda Voss, Program Specialist for Library and Media Services and Arts, please come forward, along with the music teachers' representatives, for the reading and presentation of the
Hello. I have three music teachers with me today. We have Neoko...
Your proclamation's definitely...
Oh, I was hoping you had a better call. Neoko Wickline, Suzanne Schmittling, and Melanie Fotino. They're all here to represent the music teachers. So proclamation, whereas the study of music contributes to young people's development through heightened skills in listening, reading, self-expression, and creativity, and whereas music education in the schools includes a broad range of types of music and active musical experiences, and whereas music and the other arts significantly enhance the morale and quality of the school environment, and whereas it is the stated objective of the Marion County public schools to prepare children for a productive role in our society, and whereas the National Association for Music Education has designated March as Music in Our Schools Month, and whereas the School Board of Marion County, Florida, endorses the Observance of Music in Our Schools Month in grades K through 12, as an opportunity to support the purposes and practices of music education, and encourages teachers, parents, students, and all citizens to participate. Now therefore, be it proclaimed, the School Board of Marion County, Florida recognizes the month of March 2015 to be Music in Our Schools Month.
Thank you, ma'am. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you for supporting. Thank you.
I can't wait till I come back 100% next year.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Hey!
Thank you.
I'm so happy to see you.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, teachers, and Ms. Voss.
Before they leave, though, I have to say that I've actually seen Ms. Neoko Wickline in action, and you just walk into her classroom, and those students are well aware of their instruments that they're playing, their notes, they knew more than I did in sing, and you bring a lot of value to our schools, and I know each and every one of you do, but I just had to recognize Neoko.
And Ms. Stacy has something to say, too. Thank you.
And I have also been in her classroom, and enjoyed her teaching, and she let me help out a little bit, and we did some playing, you know, I got to do a little teaching with her, and I enjoyed it so much. I put my husband through college teaching piano. That was how we paid the college tuition, and so it has come in handy for me before. It helped to mold my future. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Individuals who have completed their appropriate form prior to 5:40 PM will now have the opportunity to address the board. Before you begin your presentation, it is required that you state your name and address for the record. Additionally, please spell your last name. Matters dealing with student discipline, including expulsions, will be scheduled at the conclusion of the televised portion of this meeting. Parents wishing to address the board regarding a discipline matter will have the opportunity to do so at that time. I will now ask the school board's attorney to explain some additional points.
If you do plan to address the school board tonight, need to be aware of the newer procedures that the school board has adopted. A copy is available to you on one of the front tables. Audiovisual presentations are permitted if provided at least forty-eight hours prior to the meeting to the school board's assistant. AV presentations are limited to a total of five minutes. Use of any student's name except by his or her parents or guardian, or identifying references to or identification of other students and their families is strictly prohibited. And based on time considerations, the school board by majority vote may rightfully limit the number of presentations on any one topic, shorten the presentation time, move public comment time to a different position on the agenda, or eliminate the public comment time altogether. Ms. Point.
Madam Chair, do we have any speakers tonight?
We have no speakers this evening.
None tonight. Moving forward, may I have a motion to adopt a new job classification description for cafeteria monitor?
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. James, and seconded by Mrs. King. Mr. Superintendent.
Board members, this job classification description has been created to allow for the hiring of temporary support personnel to supervise students during meal services.
I declare a public hearing. Is there anyone present who wishes to address the new job description, classification description? Board, any discussion? I call the question. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And the motion passes 5-0. May I have a motion to adopt revised Board Policy 6.10, employment of personnel? May I have a motion, and second, please?
So moved. Second.
It's been moved by Mrs. Ely, and seconded by Mrs. King. Mr. Superintendent.
Board members, this board policy has been revised to update statutory authority and laws implemented.
I declare a public hearing. Is there anyone present who wishes to address this revised board policy? Board, any discussion? I call the question. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. And the motion passes 5-0. Board, may I have a motion to approve the consent agenda as submitted?
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved by Mrs. Ely, and seconded by Mr. James. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And the motion passes 5-0. May I have a motion to approve the following donations? $1,267.78 to Don Ellen High School from the Public Education Foundation for the mini-grant One Click Digital. $1,560 to Forest High School from One Blood Inc. Forty fluorescent TV studio light plus bulbs, clamps, and brackets, valued at $20,000 to the Marion County Public Schools Television Media Productions Department from WCJB TV20 ABC. $2,000 to Sanderwood Elementary School from Kangaroo Express Valero. $15,988 to Stanton Wesdell Elementary School from the First Baptist Church at the Villages. $1,014 to Westport High School from the Public Education Foundation for the mini-grant Good Tars for Good. $1,000 to Wyamina Park Elementary School from Target Corporation. May I have a motion, and a second, please?
So moved.
It's been moved by Mrs. Ely, and seconded by Mrs. King. Is there any discussion? I call the question. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. And Mrs. Ely, I'm going to ask you to thank our, after the vote is over, I'll ask you to thank our donors.
Okay. I, once again, I want to thank everyone...
And the motion passes 5-0. Go ahead.
Sorry. So sorry. Okay, I was ready. Okay, that was a total of $428,000. I'm sorry, excuse me, $42,000. I know, that was... $42,000, eight hundred, yeah. Okay, thank you so much for your donations, of your money to our schools and our school system. I was very impressed and shocked that the TV studio lights was a $20,000 value. I had no idea that those forty, the fluorescent TV studio lights cost that much, but thank you so much from TV20 for making a donation to our school system for that, and also for the foundation grants, and the churches that are looking to our schools to see how important it is to educate our children, and we appreciate your support so much. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Ely. Board members, I'd like to remind you that the 2015-2016 Staffing Plan will be reviewed at the Administrative Briefing and Work Session scheduled for Tuesday, March 3rd, and Thursday, March 5th, 2015. The meetings will begin at 9:00 AM. Board members, do you have any comments? I'm going to start with you, Mr. James, and we'll work our way around.
Go.
Mrs. King?
I do. It's been brought to my attention that there are plans for next year, and I guess there are plans that there are going to be part-time music and art teachers in some of our schools, so I would like to request that we have that discussion of how and where these decisions are being made for our next work session.
You will have that on Tuesday. We have a work session on Staffing Plan. We intend to present that information to you at that time.
Okay, yes, I have interest in that.
Well, I hope so.
All right. Anything else, Mrs. King?
No, that's it.
Okay. Thank you, Mrs. Stacy.
And thank you, Mrs. King. I have not heard that. Sometimes we hear things in the wilderness, and I appreciate it, anytime you bring stuff forward that you have heard, so we can have it on our mind and be checking it out through the week. Thank you so much for bringing that to our attention. This is the closing times of Black History Month, and I'd like to talk about and address some of the great educators, or some of the great people in American history, of our black history here in the United States. A very recent person that I'd like to talk about tonight is Marva Collins. She was a fabulous educator. She's, so far as I can tell, I'm trying to locate her, I believe she's living in South Carolina, but she was a black educator that opened Westside Prep School in 1975 in the inner city of Chicago. She refused all federal grants, because she did not want the regulations that came with them. A made-for-TV movie was made about her in 1980. President Reagan considered her strongly as his Secretary of Education. Over the years, she has been interviewed by Good Morning America, 60 Minutes, 2020, Fox News, and many others. She received the Jefferson Award for benefiting the disabled, the Humanitarian Award for Excellence, and the prestigious National Humanities Medal from President Bush in 2004. Her school is now closed, as she has retired. Her daughter took it over for a little while, but there's nothing like Marva, I guess, and so the school is now closed over the, within recent years. But I'd like to share some of her words before I close. Here are her own words, speaking as though she were speaking. "I travel across the country, and I meet children in 3rd and 4th grade who cannot read at grade level. School system's answer is to test the child, which eventually leads to labeling. At the beginning of each school year, I admit children as young as three and a half years old, and I guarantee their parents they will read by Christmas after coming into my school in September, and I have never tested a student prior to admission. Most of my students come to me already labeled by the Chicago Public School 'experts,' she calls them, as children uneducable, for a variety of reasons." She sent one of her school representatives once, to sort of like a school staffing, what we call school staffing, and he sat in on an 8th grade psychological evaluation, where the evaluation side of the boy had limited knowledge of phonetic rules. So, she said, "My representative asked the teacher in Chicago schools three questions. The teacher was there during the evaluation. She asked, 'How many ways are there to spell A, the long vowel sound?'" "Four," responded the teacher. "By the way, that was the wrong answer," Dr. Collins, Mrs. Collins, said, "because there are eleven ways." The second question that her representative asked the teacher at that Chicago Public School staffing was, "Well, you're saying that there's a problem with his understanding of phonetics. What are the classifications of the /ch/ sound?" "I have no idea," said the teacher. The answer? "There are three pronunciation's of /ch/ as in champagne, as in church, and as in ache." The third question she asked was, "What is the significance of AI and Y?", and the teacher had no answer. Well, they are the vowels. This child was being placed in learning disabled classes, but how could he learn things his teacher did not know? Phonics is taught to all my children, because they unlock the mystery of reading. I have taught so many children who came to me, that today have become scholars in the process, who came to me as uneducable. I do not look for excuses. I do not blame parents, and I certainly do not blame their socioeconomic disadvantages. I would rather spend time teaching than testing and labeling. The CBS program 60 Minutes visited my school for the first time in 1980, and again in 1996. 60 Minutes documented the case of one student of mine the Chicago Public Schools had labeled borderline retarded, learning disabled, and unable to ever learn to read or write. When 60 Minutes program visited again sixteen years later, the child had graduated college, summa cum laude. She said, "Our children and our parents surrender themselves to those identified as protectors, but who sometimes unfortunately destroy them. Children come to school to get what they lack, and they are told instead all the things they cannot do. Children come to school to become complete, and we split them in half. They can never learn to be creative with dumbed-down work like meaningless worksheets. Until we teach children to believe that I am, I think, and I will, the plight of the black family will continue. A mind with too many holes in it will always depend upon the validation of someone else's opinion." I read this, because I brought my concerns about the way we teach reading to this school board, and spoke about it in workshops, speaking about the Montessori alphabet, and the phonics, and the way the Montessori, they don't teach whole language, they teach phonics. Her school taught phonics, but you have to have a full understanding of it, and she, when she was, before she completely retired, she was even having seminars, teaching teachers how to seriously teach phonics. And I continue asking and begging this district to look into the Montessori alphabet and the way they teach their children, because I spoke with Dr. Dewise, in charge of our Title I program, about this, and she was over at Madison Street, and we had a little conversation, I think it was six months, maybe a year ago, and I asked her what she knew about, because I respect Dr. Dewise, she did wonderful things when she was at Fezzington, and she shared with me that she did recall the students that came over from the Montessori private school, because children come from all private schools, but that the children that came from the Montessori private school, so it wasn't because they were extra gifted as far as parents putting, I mean, parents choose all kinds of private schools for their children, you know, before that preschool programs, but she herself, as an educator, had just noticed that the Montessori children were quite prepared for reading. And so I still ask that we possibly follow up on this, because there might be a better way than what we're doing it. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Stacy, and Mr. Superintendent, maybe we can find out a little information for her. Ms. Stacy, and thank you, Ms. Stacy, for your mention of Black History Month, I really appreciate that.
I appreciate you, too, Ms. I wanted to, also with Black History Month, I wanted to mention the honor I had of going to Silver River Museum to see John Griffin, who was dressed in a Seminole garb, spoke an hour about Seminole, black Seminole Indians in Florida, and he had some real great stories to tell. I had to leave a little bit early, and so I went up and I talked to him, and I said, "I love your Seminole outfit, and is that hair of yours real?" He said, "All of it. I paid $90 for it." But he gave a real good, interesting story. But he gave a real good, interesting story about the history of the Seminoles, which I knew nothing about. And so I invite teachers to take a look at that. If you don't have time today or tomorrow, take a look at the history of the Black Seminole Indians and what they've done, what they've gone through. It's a little bit different than you probably already know. The other thing I want to talk about was the Youth Fair, which is going on this week. And if you haven't had a chance to go out, it's going on in the evenings as well. The children are showing their animals and then selling them. And it's just a great opportunity for our kids to learn about what to do with farm animals, because they, that's a big part of our life. And I hope that all of our elementary schools can eventually have their kids going to a youth fair. The last thing I wanted to talk about was the Pace Center for Girls. They had a luncheon. This is a school for, that houses girls in middle, middle school and high school that are having problems in their school. They're not able to adjust, they're, even through counseling, they're not able to get what they need. So this is an alternative school for our public school girls. And it's an incredible school, they're doing great things. And they rely totally on donations. So many businesses are involved in donating to the Pace School. And I welcome you to go see Pace Center for Girls. It's right downtown, and it's a beautiful new facility, very well-run, I'm very impressed. And they asked me to give our board members an envelope, as we passed out business, for taking, for any kind of support that you can give, okay? But go visit Pace if you don't ever, if you haven't ever had the opportunity. Thank you, Ms. Point.
Thank you, Mrs. Ely. Mr. Superintendent.
Thank you, Ms. Boyne, two or three announcements here. Certainly want to thank Mrs. Ely, Mrs. King, and Mr. James for attending one or more of our State of the Schools presentations that we did this past week and a half. Our principals truly, might have been a little nervous, wondering why you were there, but they did appreciate you being in the room and listening to the things they're doing in our schools. This other note about our schools, and it's a pretty interesting statistic I just heard today, that the Marion County Public Schools District with their Employee and Student United Way Campaign is the fifth-largest campaign in all of the state of Florida out of sixty-seven counties. Now, we rank right in the middle as far as student population and employee population is concerned, but we're the fifth-largest United Way Campaign. I think that's a tribute to those employees and our students. You possibly have seen the news today that Governor Scott today did release his executive order to suspend the 11th-grade English Language Arts Florida Standards Assessment for 11th graders. We still have no word on the PERT test for 11th graders, but we anticipate more news about that. This morning, at the Foundation Board Meeting, Mrs. Boyne, who represents you there, also heard what I think is a pretty exciting opportunity for Take Stock in Children students. The Pinellas County Foundation and another group in Pinellas County actually developed a software program for career guidance. It's a career guidance software program. And it's in its fledgling age right now. And ten counties have been asked to pilot this program with their Take Stock in Children students. So this next spring, our Take Stock in Children students, which are about a hundred and thirty now, I think is what I heard the number this morning, will actually be taking this program. Our hope is that this program will become available for all of our students and will be a valuable tool in helping them to either be career or college-ready. We'll tell you more about that as we hear that. This past week, we had our first conference call with Mixon and Associates, our lobbyist and consultant in Tallahassee. As you know, right now, our legislators are holding committee meetings, and there has been very minimal discussion about the budget. You've read it in the newspaper, our economists are saying that we have a pretty robust economy right now. Very little is being said about that. And our committees, all committees, are pretty much consumed with the testing and assessment issue. And I think we're going to hear an awful lot about that in the coming months. We've reported to you a couple of things, I need to give you an update also in reference to class size and class size violations, whatever they might be. And the last we reported to you, we had four schools that were out of compliance. Two of those schools were actually data processing or scheduling errors. And then two schools had a minimal number of students who were over their class size. The original withholding penalty was going to be a hundred and four thousand dollars and some change. In writing a plan, that would be reduced to about twenty-six thousand dollars. And I'm very pleased to say that DOE recognized and gave us the opportunity to correct those scheduling errors, which we have done. So the penalty is only going to be just under three thousand dollars, which is about twenty-nine hundred dollars. Hats off to our data processing folks in our MIS department who were able to make those corrections. And also our school personnel were able to do that. Mrs. Ely's already mentioned the Southeastern Youth Fair. Tonight is the steer sale, you will have time to get there, it looks like, starts at seven o'clock. Keep your hands in your pocket unless you want to go home with a lot of ground beef tonight. And then Friday night, we've had some comments about this month. Friday night is the Unsung Heroes Program at Howard Academy, beginning at 6:30 with a reception and a program at seven, recognizing some outstanding African-American local talent and leadership here in Marion County. That's all I have, ma'am.
Thank you, Mr. Superintendent, Mrs. Block, do you have anything? Mr. Lake?
I'll just mention, I did enjoy attending the MTI luncheon with Ms. Point, and we had a great time. Saw Mrs. Ely there and the superintendent, a whole bunch of folks, Bobby was there. And I thought it was a great, a great session there. Kids were extremely enthusiastic, which was really marvelous. That's all I have.
Thank you. I was gonna mention that too, the most exciting part for me was just seeing our students demonstrate some of the projects they ran. And I don't know if you've ever seen a drone, but they actually had a drone flying around. And I was like, wow. This is what our students are doing, you know? They produce so many wonderful things, and it was just a joy to see them. And thank you to Mr. Lake for attending with me. I also had the opportunity to go to Westport yesterday. Representative Jimmy Smith spoke to the Junior ROTC, and he was so inspirational. And I was overwhelmed by his speech, you know? And I'm sure most of our students there were too. It was just, I thought it was an honor. He's a former, he's over the Veterans Committee and our state legislator. And for him to come and speak, he's been going around the state from what I understand, but he chose our school, Westport, and he will be attending Vanguard in May. And believe it or not, one of the things he spoke about was he was a high school dropout who actually joined the military, got his GED, and now he's a state legislator. I was really, really impressed, and that was awesome. As many of you know, our board worked very hard during the past week to make sure that the Independent Citizens Referendum Oversight Committee was chosen and the Alternates as well. And I want to thank you again, and I want to thank all of the members of the community who really, really moved and had a lot of concern for our community and our school. And I want to just thank you for submitting your names. And if you weren't chosen, there's always an opportunity for you to volunteer somewhere in our school system. So keep your minds open. We do have two new committees that we formed. Mr. James is over the balanced budget, balanced scorecard. And Mrs. Stacy is over the Parents Engagement Involvement Committee. And thank you. At this time, I wish to acknowledge that board members have received the Alternative Placement List for Students Through February 6, 2015. Are there any parents in the audience who wish to speak on behalf of a student regarding a disciplinary matter? There being no further business, may I have a motion to adjourn?
So move.
Second.
Moved by Mrs. Stacy, seconded by Mr. James, any discussion about that? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. And the meeting is adjourned at 6:09 p.m.